Yes, thank you. I'm back again urging you to all of you to attend a minute. But before I do that, I really want to compliment Bridgeville Borough and South Fayette Township for one of the very finest Memorial Day parades I have ever seen in my lifetime. It was really a very great event in Bridgeville and I want to thank you very much. The Historic Society has, of course, the publication monthly. And the next week on the 20th it's going to be about time, American time system. This man spoke to us last fall on the decline of the steel industry in the United States. It was a phenomenal speaker. Very interesting. Then we give you a little bit of tidbit news and one of you could win a $25 gift certificate to Berg's Pizza wings if you came down, visited with us and put your name in the jug. At the end of this month we'll be doing the drawing. It's a $25 gift certificate, you have a chance to win. And these have all been donated, so everything is a donation and if you win, it's a donation also. Then on the next side of the white page, you'll find out that on the day of the avenue, we will be starting to sell our wrapping tickets. The company for my work gave us four seats and got the parking pass August 3rd, Thursday night, but it's big pilot baseball. We urge you all to take a chance on that. Tomorrow night is the next study for all of you who went to Bridgeville High School. He did take us from 1903 to 1917. This month it's going to be 1917 to 1927 and in July, God knows how far it will get, but it's interesting to anyone who ever went to Bridgeville High School. And the other thing I just want to mention before I call it a day for today, I've been urging you to do something with Pendott because with South Fayette developing the Navy Road, Upper St. Clair's developing that area, someone really needs to be creating a massive double decker if you like, or do Germany, do eight, uh, yeah, you know what I'm saying. Anyway, get them to go across by 19, get onto I-79, get onto the new highway to go to, if they don't want to come sit through Bridgeville. And that's, I just urge you to continue working on that. Thank you very much. Hope see you tomorrow night, you from Bridgeville High.
Thanks, Mary. Sandy Mahoney?
Yes. Whoops. Do I have to go up there?
You don't have to.
No. I live on Randy Avenue and I have heard 32 years. I had a couple concerns. There are two houses that have been abandoned on the street. I believe it's 250 and 253. 250 has been vacant for upwards of 10 years. And 253 is the one that had the flood and it's sitting there and being not taken care of. The grass is very high, the yellow tape is still there, and I'm sure that there is just mold growing on the inside of that house that's unbelievable. I didn't know if Bridgeville was able to do anything about that or if that is solicitor issue.
You know these houses?
Yeah. Well, I didn't know about 250. I didn't know that it was.
More definitely we take it over to 250. We're aware of 253.
Can you give us a little bit of background on 250?
It's the one right beside City Coin. It's the White House right beside City Coin. Mrs. Dunlap lived there. I mean, it has been empty. I believe there were issues with kids in the basement a few years back, but it's been sitting empty for a long time.
And when the other one is caught off the.
And when the other one is caught off the diesel issue, so we're all worried. This one is taking. We have issues with. We have issues with. It's our God and they have the state on. It's our God and they have the state on. We have. We have issues with.
Okay. We can do that.
That's the best we can do.
Okay.
Part of this part is working on some.
Okay, that'd be good. The other issue I had was with the railroad in the back of our property. There's stagnant water back there that is green and smells and I'm worried with the summer coming with the mosquitoes. And when they did the work on the railroad, was it last year or two years ago, they have left all of their unused debris laying there by the tracks. The really long pieces of metal rail that they replaced are still laying there.
That was after an accident or something.
No, I think they just did maintenance.
It was general maintenance. I actually sent them a couple letters. In fact, I have pictures in my office of all of the debris that's laying there. And as of this date, no response.
Is that the same level of well that you've been working with?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll walk with you.
Well, I mean, if you need residents to call on a weekly basis, let me know. I'd be happy to do that. Is there any hope of getting that sprayed down there? Does the railroad still do that?
No. The railroad doesn't do any of that. I can send public works down there to spray that, but the railroad doesn't.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thanks for your help.
Can we have a touch at the breathing valve or? From the previous thing of one other time, you came to touch.
It's a large problem.
Yeah, right.
The mosquitoes seem like a big concern. They're not required to make any drainage.
They're like, why is that waffle looking at that?
Sure, yeah.
That's a new issue. There are evidence on that.
Thank you very much. Bob Frye.
Thank you. Looking for some drawing. Last week, last week, I by chance attended a meeting at the Churchill's Alley at school. It was a Pendott public meeting that I happened to hear about. It was primarily about, I guess, stuff that you guys know about. A developer is going to, I guess, move the Eaton Park and modify Peters Place and try to develop that quarter. But what I was concerned about was it's another traffic point that's a half, about three quarters of a mile from Bridgeville. So I was always interested in making sure the problems aren't created, whether the start vehicles come into Bridgeville's business. Just what I wanted to show you was this.
Bob.
Yes.
This is not Bridgeville. This is Collier.
Yes, but it relates to Bridgeville.
I know it relates to Bridgeville, but we have no jurisdiction over this.
Well.
I don't know which, I don't, I just don't know which, what your work, where you're going with this and what you want to do.
I didn't wait until they explained it. It didn't, it relates directly to Bridgeville. Matter of fact, this is a copy of the drawing that was on the wall. When I saw it, I was very concerned because I thought it was a very poor design. Just to give you a rundown, this area from the Venadium Road to the access road size 79 is about 900 feet and you can sort of divide it into 300, 300, 300. And right now, as you know, there are 60 cars that sit up there, two 30-lane roads that takes the four-lane road, two lanes. That's the lesson that coming in the Bridgeville, it's been that way for, I don't know how long. At any rate, what I noticed was instead of having a whole lane of stacking lanes, cars here going down the Venadium Road, they've cut it in half. Instead of having stacking lanes here that would allow cars to turn up onto 79, there are none. And what concerned me most is in the middle section, they created a fifth lane where cars can go left and right out of the same area. To make a long story short, I went to Pendott and told them that I really think this was a good idea.
Did you go to Collier? Pardon? Did you go to Collier and talk to them?
Yes, I told, I talked, I wanted.
Did you go to their meeting?
No, no, I talked to the president of the commission.
You should go to their meeting.
Yeah, well, I will. Again, this is important for us. Let me get to that point. I met with one of the Pendott engineers, actually I met with two of the Pendott engineers. I brought these names to their attention and they seemed to be as surprised as I was. They, they told me that this was a mistake. They questioned whether this was their drawing. I guess they had a subcontractor create the concept for them. On the spot, the senior engineer said to his assistant, that's going to be changed. That can't, you can't have that problem there. And I asked him, I said, what about this area here that you're wasting, you know, the 30 or 15 or 20 stacking places? He said the same thing. He said they're going to put a left turn stacking lane in there, again, to accommodate this movement, okay? At any rate, when the, I was relatively happy that they were making these changes. When that was over, I said, I have a couple of questions for you about Bridgeville. I said, are we really going to get a seven-lane bridge? And he mentally, imaginarily, commented up with seven lanes. He said yes. I said, the seventh lane is important because if it's not, eventually Upper St. Clair will have the upstream lane dedicated themselves and Bridgeville will end up with just one lane coming in at a time. He said it's going to be seven lanes. The other thing I asked him was about the widening of Washington Pike that's been proposed, another lane, of course you know about that. And he said that Pendott like also approves of that. I asked him about the left turn stacking lane on Washington Pike in front of Bethany Church for cars going up Churchill Street because as you know, one car stops there, ties up thirty cars behind it, which means people can't, we can't get cars to stop that. To make a long story short, he mentioned that, he deferred to his, I guess, project manager. And the second engineer said he has no, the left turn stacking lane is not in the plan at this point. And I said, I think it has to, and I said, for obvious reasons, that I would like to stunt correctly and we're concerned about traffic.
Who's speaking? What you're saying, please?
I'm speaking for you guys.
Please.
Oh, you guys don't want a left turn stacking lane?
No, you don't speak for us.
Oh, well, that's fine. Okay, I'll tell them what doesn't matter. I wasn't speaking for you. I was guessing what their opinion was. It would be from the public. At any rate, he told me there was no left turn stacking lanes there. And I, he emphasized, I told my father, Lori had mentioned at two of the meetings that it wasn't there. I think at the last meeting, I asked Lori how they were going to create the left turn stacking lane. Was they, were they going to move the east curb by the drugstore over 12 feet and then taper down to zero, the James Street across from the post office, which is what I recommended. You didn't, of course. And she said she was going to.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah, sure, go right ahead.
I talked to Todd Kravitz regarding the left turn lane.
Yes.
And what he said to me was, they want to do it, they want to be able to accommodate us to do it. Right now, they're looking at how it's going to impact the Rite Aid. So it's not off the table.
That's wonderful.
It's not off the table. I talked to him on Thursday.
That's right.
But they're looking at how it's going to impact the adjoining business.
Well.
Because we're going to be impacting it from Churchill Street and from Washington Avenue.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that because when I was, when I was, excuse me, when I was talking to him, he had no clue about it. It wasn't in the plan. No one, I asked, I said, I'm sure I thought that our original officials didn't notify that.
We had talked about it in our meetings, have we not, Joe?
Yes, we did.
It was good that you sent a letter to Pendott requesting it.
We had talked about it in our meetings, in our development.
Right, they were, were requests.
Did you ever formally request them, other than yet, two days ago?
We didn't formally request anything that was in the plan. We submitted the plans and then when.
They went over them.
We went over them and then when we had the plan, as far as the area in front of Rite Aid, we talked about that being a left stick, left-hand turn stacking lane. And they had said that they would like to do that, that they were going to look at that. And we were hopeful that they were going to put it in the plan.
She did.
Now, it's not in the plan and he said they are going to try to accommodate us.
That's fine. But I was going to say, the other day, the chief engineer had no clue that we even wanted that.
Maybe you just didn't have a present recollection when you had it at that time. The way they're working, we need to work. But, 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 please. They go to these meetings, they have working meetings, they hash things out, they reach consensus, they don't need to write a letter because they know next time they come back, it'll be in there if the consensus reached and they've said they're going to have it in the next plan or not, early down the road. And it's a work of process and those things that aren't in, she has the conversations like she just had in the.
And it was with Todd.
Obviously on Joe's mind. And I'm sure actually, when focused on it, the fellow who led that conversation made known to recollect that his entire team, I'm sure he confessed to.
It might have been.
Is that accurate?
Yep.
Right, and we're trying, and we're trying to get a task force meeting together, Bob, because of the changes in leadership at Pendott that have recently occurred so that we can get an update on where they stand in the project. I mean, the project's in the process of being designed, it was just a matter of where is all the funding? The funding, there was a significant amount of, significant portion of the money already committed, but the district executive had taken it upon himself to help us find additional funds. So since he's no longer there, we've got to find out how are they going to help us with the fund to close the gap.
Yeah, well, I'm glad that you're progressing that far, but from the information I got, you can see why my conclusions were as they were. Chief Guy was unaware of it.
Who's the chief guy?
His assistant.
Who's the chief guy?
contract. You called him.
And then Todd knew about it, I talked to him.
Excuse me, I'm telling you what happened in my presence. He, he, his assistant.
Obviously, obviously, you're getting one story from him and she's getting a different story.
Well, then talk to him about it. His assistant.
I did talk to him about it. I called him and I asked him about the left turn lane. And his exact words to me were, we are going to try to accommodate you.
It better.
We're going to see what impact it has on the adjoining business.
Great. Do you think that was because I emphasized the importance of.
I'm sure. Everything you've been talking about it for two years. Whoever, really.
If I'm lying, I'm sure it was Bob.
Yeah, right.
I might put something on the table. Pendott's a rather large organization.
No, we're not, we're talking about one person. We're not talking like.
No, no, I understand and I know Todd Kravitz has been working on this project very closely and, and the people at Pendott are paying a lot of attention and doing a very nice job of accommodating us. But I'd point out that our original plans that Mike Eberman did did not show that, the turn stacking lane, okay? They just said they're not. And it might be beneficial if we, you know, forward something that indicates that Bridgeville would like to see that.
Yes, right.
Either, you know, perhaps maybe even as far as having Mike Eberman update that concept from there. I don't know that that's necessary, Joe Sights, you know, I'm just trying to think of how to better make sure that it's in the process.
That's what Kravitz requested. He said he needs something from you guys to request the left turn lane. You're telling me that you've submitted.
And he, and he did not say that to me.
I know.
But we'll, we'll do it anyway, but he did not, he did not say that.
That's fine. Thank you again.
Michael Sutton.
Good evening. I'm, my name's Michael Sutton. We're at Residence 1423 Main Street, right here in Bridgeville. We're here on behalf of a few other residents on Main Street about the issues that's coming out of Bender's Farm Estates as residents, people using it as a thoroughfare. Speed limit, posted speed limit on Main Street is 25 mile an hour. We're having cars doing 40, 50, 60 mile an hour through there. There's been multiple times, because I parked my company truck on the street in front of my house, as do other people. I've gotten out of my truck and almost been ran over by different vehicles coming out of Bender's Farm Estates. They do not slow down, they do not follow the posted speed limit signs and the stop signs that was put in place going into Bender's Farms off of Main Street into Bender's Farm, they don't pay attention to. They blow right through it. And it's, almost every vehicle is going into there. The normal vehicles that we see are the same residents that has been there before that road had opened. And they follow the posted speed limit signs because they live in that community. They understand that people walk up and down that street with their kids, with their pets. There's a lot of, a lot of foot traffic on that road and a lot of the people that's coming out of these states is not paying attention to that or don't care, to be honest. And it's becoming more of a safety issue than anything else because they're going to end up hitting somebody's pet, somebody's child, or somebody walking, especially in the evening. And it's going, they're going to end up killing somebody and that's what it's going to take. You know what I mean? I'm hoping that's not what it takes to get some sort of issue taken care of. Another issue is all the construction vehicles that come out of Bender's Farm Estates. I'm okay with them building their houses, that's fine. I have no issue with that. But we're on the Upper St. Clair, Bridgeville kind of border right there. There's two other entryways to get into these states. And they're using Main Street as an everyday access point. I understand that it's five minutes off their drive time. I get it. I do a lot of driving work and I understand it. But when they're bringing 40, 50-ton vehicles through there across the road, us taxpayers are the ones who's having to pay to repair them roads that they're using, that they're not putting any taxes into. Another thing is those, the, the construction workers are also not following any of the posted speed limit signs. There's two signs that say no construction vehicles shall exit from Bender's Farm Estates or as you come off of, onto Sylvia, there's another sign there as well. There's two signs posted at either entrance, the Main Street. And they, excuse me, they follow neither of them. I didn't, I wasn't, I, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention because it's becoming more of a problematic issue that seems to, it's not going to cure itself, it's just going to keep getting worse. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and I'm hoping that we can maybe figure something out to, to deal with that issue. That'd be great. Thank you.
Chief, you have any?
Sure, I'd like to know what time of day it seems. Myself first, when I'm sat up and watching the stop sign by coming to my house, it'd be in the Main Street. And I can tell you, sitting here 15, 20 minutes at a time, maybe two vehicles notice what I'm seeing this morning and that's, you know? So if you could, what seems to be the busy time of day out there? Because we're not, I'm not sitting in the whole wide world.
Right, usually I'm going from 5:00 in the morning until about 6:00, 6:30 in the evening. And about six, between, I'd say 6:30, 7 o'clock till around 8:00 is.
AM?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Is whenever, you know, we're getting a lot of traffic through there toward, they're just, they're just blowing right through the stop sign. Same with the speed, it's usually toward the evening, it's either.
Speeding themselves too.
Right, and I understand that.
Because in order to get lines up there and find a place to sit where we can see where there aren't cars, that's darn near impossible.
Right, and I mean, you guys do a great job at this, you know what I mean? And I'm not trying to.
We try, that's why, that's why I want to know when you're, because I know I've sat up there and it's like a no. Whenever I've sat there.
Well, whenever, we bought the house two years ago and the reason why we bought the house is because there was not very much traffic, it was very quiet. And now, as soon as that, that road opened up, I mean, it's just, it's constant, it's non-stop.
The one issue we have, this sign right here, as opposed as you come up Sylvia.
Correct.
Okay, I brought this up over a year ago, but this sign is not forcible because we do not have local delivery ordinance on Main Street. So any delivery can go up and down Main Street, wants to, Cleveland Council, McCullus, or this sign would be put up, you know, removed if we don't have the ordinance on that street. The other problem we have, and I'm just going to tell it like it is, as far as free throw goes up above, where we do have local delivery ordinance, we issued several citations and I don't believe that anybody that's requested a hearing has ever found the only of those. Just not only you.
Right.
You know? So we look forward to it, we wrote a lot of tickets, unless people will play the OWE charge for this mess. But the issue we have down there, this sign is not why it shouldn't be created. As far as the signs that come out of Bender's, were these part of that initial agreement? Just with the workers?
It was part of the agreement with Bender's Estates that the construction vehicles would not come up onto the street.
Right. It's a long shot, I think, to enforce this utilizing vehicle code. I could talk to Roy Slistor about that.
Those actually have to be enforced by, I've been trying to get Upper St. Clair, those are development agreements obligations.
Right.
Like they impose on the.
And that's why, I don't think.
Basically, we're violating their development agreements with Upper St. Clair by allowing their construction vehicles.
Now.
That's not a law, it's not a development agreement.
Right, and then just so you know too, from day one, when these projects started up there in Mary's Verifi, I hand-delivered letters to the builders up there, contractors, the guys in charge of it, I mean, and.
We need to.
It makes sense to try to prevent this.
Right.
Just so you know.
And, you know, we have, there's a stone, like stone concrete company that has front loader concrete trucks. You know, they're coming up the road with 15, 20 yards of cement, fully rolling the ball. And that's a 60,000 pound truck.
That's a, we have no way.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, and it's just, and they're, I mean, the speed is, is more of the issue than anything else.
Well, I was standing outside, I get home 6:00, 6:15, it starts to get busy after that time. I was standing outside talking to a neighbor and there was a, it was a big truck, I think it had a crane on the back. He came rolling out of Bender's Farms and down the street and then a van was shortly there after him. And he actually stopped the van and kind of said, you know, do you mind slowing down when you're coming through here? Just because it's, it's getting scary.
Where are you at? Are you between Bender's and Sylvia Street or?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Sylvia Street, okay, so you're right between the exit there on Main Street where the new connector is and Sylvia Street.
Correct. We're. Four. We're three houses, three houses from Bender's Farm. Bender's Farm, one, two, four, yeah, I'm sorry, four. Four houses out on one way.
One house sits back, it's in.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but from what I've read, enforcement is not useful in slowing people down under a stop sign. Is there any design consideration? Can you make parking lines or?
Work gets out. Well, we're right, it did, work gets out, but the issue we have here is if lines on roads or other people park, we might just fucking sit and monitor them. It's very tough.
That's why you want to continue designing.
More traffic. Might drive, maybe that anymore, you know?
One lady with a speed hump, so I'm, I'm here in the park, they're, they're not a bump, but they're a big hump. You know what I mean?
I believe they can probably shift like you don't. Those aren't cheese.
Yeah. We did, we did a traffic study before the Bender Farms ever came. When we found out the Bender Farms was coming, there was a traffic study down on Quig School Road, on Main Street, on Ridge Road. And the only road that qualified for speed humps and is slightly, just very barely qualified, was Ridge Road. So that's why there are no speed humps on, on Main Street. We tried to do our due diligence to see if what we can do, and I actually have a copy of the report if anybody wants to see it, but it includes all the roadblocks up there to try to see if there was anything that we could do to traffic calm. Because there's parking on both sides of the street, I do believe, that's a, that's a traffic calming, what they consider to be traffic calming because of the parking there. But there, they made no recommendations for anything else.
Chief, is there a way that you could work with the residents on that street? It sounds like they'd be willing to help you make, make the ability of putting those lines in. We, I would have to look at that to see where you will sit, to see the lines. And with the road being slow, you know, and hanging in plus for cars, that's what makes it difficult. Ideally, that'd be an ideal place for a right park. If we're not using, getting all these signs, that'd be ideal. That's a separate parkment for a separate day. I just want to know when the bulk of the traffic is. I personally haven't seen it up there, you know, anytime I've sat and watched that sign.
I've walked the Main Street considerable amount of time. And typically, four to six is our ideal time for taking a walk in the afternoon and that's, It sounds like they'd be willing to help you make the ability of putting those lines in.
We, I would have to look at that to see where you'll sit, to see the lines. And with the road being slow, you know, and hanging in my plus where cars park, that's what makes it difficult. Ideally, that'd be an ideal place for a right park.
Yeah.
If you had all these signs, that'd be ideal. That's a separate parkment for a separate day. I just wanna know when the bulk of the traffic is. I personally haven't seen it up there. You know, anytime I've sat and watched that sign.
I've walked the Main Street considerable amount of time. And typically, four to six is our ideal time for taking a walk in the afternoon. And that's, you know, there's a lot of cars zipping, zipping. I can't tell you how fast, but they're going a pretty good clip down Main Street. You know, that late afternoon.
I do love how you guys will sit on Sylvia, Sylvia, watch Bauer Hill though. You guys do a really good job of that.
That's the problem, Eric.
It is, because I try to pull out and then I get to work and it's the opposite.
Chief, the letters that you sent out. I think it's, I think we should redate them and send them out again to deliver to the construction site on construction vehicles. Next week sometime.
We have to find out when the project ends, because it's already changed five times.
That's why I'm saying we need to send them out here. Because they change and for some reason, they don't seem to be able to read the signs sometimes. I don't know that we need, so listen, I don't know that we need to take the next step. Not only was that part of their developer's agreement, but in fact, correct, was it not also part of an agreement with Ridgeville regarding access? I believe that it was one of the clauses in that agreement with us. And a simple notification of what's going on and we have issues. We have pictures of the trucks on Ridge. You know, and that's a very nice thing of cell phones. If you happen to snap a picture, it's a very nice thing.
At the next, not the next meeting, I'm sure I could have a board up.
Very easy, you can forward them down, you know? Very nice to see them because it makes it very clear. And I have seen amazing, the truck with the electrical cable on it was pretty much the biggest one coming up Ridge. Can't figure out how the guy got up Ridge to begin with.
He worked hard.
He worked hard to get up there. And when it comes to the other item, which is the GPS, tends to lead you there.
Right. It doesn't variate between a small vehicle and a loader or anything else.
I talked to, I talked to the guy from that electrical company, he's like, "We won't do it anymore." That's the way the GPS told me to get there.
Well, the gentleman I spoke with, I can't remember the company's name, the gentleman I spoke with, I spoke with the site superintendent, he was from Florida. And he told me that he had no idea, that he's never been even up to see the sun. So he had no idea that these guys were using roads that they wasn't exposed to this at first. And he assured me that it wouldn't happen again, but I mean, that's...
There's one number, and that's why the chief will, I'm sure, get those letters back.
Thank you.
Anything else, Michael?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric Nimmels.
I'm just here to answer questions when you get to the Newbury agenda item.
No problem. Thank you. Anthony Mastran.
Hey, everybody, Anthony Mastran. I've got another traffic problem I want to bring up. I live on the corner of Murray and Shady, and I really like to visit the areas down here by Railroad Street. Except I've almost been hit a dozen times crossing Washington Pike.
Right here?
Right here. Either direction, on either side of the street. I've been close enough to the cars that have decided to whiz through the intersection to touch them on a number of occasions. My wife has almost been hit, her mother has almost been hit. I had to wait three light cycles with my baby in a stroller for someone to, for the traffic to stop taking the turn while I had the block sign on a number of occasions. So I don't know, it's certainly not gonna be solved with enforcement, I don't think either. That intersection is just too weird, too wide. People aren't looking down to where you have to stand, press the button, and look at the sign. There's something going on in their design process that is causing these folks to just not, not notice an adult person or the baby. I just, I don't know, I was waving and yelling, trying to get them to see that I was there trying to cross.
I've experienced the exact same thing, I think.
Yeah, and I make choices now about not coming down here and not visiting these businesses because of this intersection. And as easy as it is to go on the station, you just, you know, sometimes you just get in your car and you head up and presto. You know what I mean? So it's, it's a real, it's not just a problem for the residents, I think it's a problem for anyone who wants to walk Ridgeville. That's a huge intersection to be taken.
And it's really the crossing from Bauer Hill roadside across Bauer Hill Road. That's the, that's the deadly one.
Oh, that, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, well, you're...
This intersection in both directions on either side, that's where I've had my worst trouble.
See, I've experienced it directly, the people making the left turn from Washington down Bauer Hill. And I'm trying to cross the road and they don't even know that I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my walking direction, not the turning direction. If I'm crossing Washington Pike in either direction, on either side of the road, so yeah, all those left turns.
Yeah, all those, they're really tough. And, you know, I'm almost thinking that it might be better to change where the pedestrian crossing is. So the pedestrian crossing is down further into the, into the intersection, down further away from the intersection. Because I don't think we're gonna solve it. You know, from an enforcement standpoint, I don't think we're gonna be able to solve it. You know, and you think, Joe, you think this is something that Mike Haberman should make a look at?
Think you probably look at, but I'm not sure what...
Mike Haberman is the traffic engineer for Haberman.
I'm not sure what you're gonna change on crosswalks unless it's put something into the timing related to...
I think try.
Everything comes to a dead stop and then everybody has full walking.
That really make, I hear what you're saying, but I'm thinking...
They're already not looking for people. Oh, you're saying red lights.
Red light.
Yeah, scramble walk, red lights. That would be a really major disruption to the traffic flow.
Yeah, because we all know we already wait too long at that intersection in the car.
I was thinking maybe to take a look at moving the pedestrian crossings away from the intersection itself. So that, you know, your pedestrian car, because your pedestrian crossing here, if you cross here at the road building, that's safe, you're not allowed to do it, jaywalking.
Yes, there's no pedestrian crossing.
I know that. I've never, none of us, none of us here, I'm sure, have ever crossed the street there. We all go up and take our lives into our hands crossing Bauer Hill Road at its junction with Washington Avenue where people are making the left and don't even see you, or you're waving your hands.
You have to sprint coming right across here to do that.
Yeah, well, you're, that's what I'm saying, maybe this is the... Maybe this is the very small, I don't know.
In any way, I think it's a design problem, somebody's gotta have something interesting here.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, one other thing, I just...
Oh, no, we're done.
I noticed Higman is being repaid, is it Higman? I saw some beautiful brick under there. Are we interested in, is there any, can we get the brick roads back if we're tearing the road up and we see nice brick? Or is it just too much of a mess?
Too expensive. Way too expensive.
But we're not losing... It's too expensive in what time period? Because how many times are we gonna repay? How long does brick last versus...
A hundred years. Those up in our area were put in nineteen twenties. And the concrete street I live on that I helped pay for has been there since nineteen fifty-seven. So what is more expensive? The monthly, weekly, yearly?
And I think we could, I think there's information out there showing that brick streets, because they're a little bit wobblier, you drive a slow run, it's a little safer.
No, how do you miss an hour? The way the nice thing about a brick street is you can tell how fast the cars are coming by vibration. You know, the speed before you see. Thank you very much.
All right, it's a regular meeting. Minutes. Motion of Borough Council regarding the minutes of May eighth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting as submitted. Bruce and Burke, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number one, two thousand sixteen CCTV project. Motion of Borough Council regarding the remittal of the current estimate number one, two thousand sixteen CCTV project to advance plumbing and draining in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents for work completed to date. Estimate has been reviewed and approved by engineer sites. Bruce?
I'll say it.
And Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Estimate number one, current estimate number one, two thousand seventeen CCTV project. Motion of Borough Council regarding the remittal of current estimate number one, two thousand seventeen CCTV project to advance plumbing and draining in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents for work completed to date.
So move.
For carrying?
Second.
Who's that?
Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number two, two thousand sixteen CCTV project. Motion of Borough Council regarding the remittal of current estimate number two, two thousand sixteen CCTV project to advance plumbing and draining in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty cents for work completed to date. At the time of completion of the agenda, we're gonna make a public... So Bruce?
Second.
And Burke, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion of Borough Council regarding the remittal of current estimate number two, two thousand seventeen CCTV project to advance plumbing and draining in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents for work completed to date. Bruce? Second. And Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All those opposed? Motion carries. Cargill Incorporated and Virgil Borough, second amendment to Articles Agreement. A motion of the Borough Council regarding the second amendment to the Articles Agreement between Cargill Incorporated, our salt supplier, and Virgil Borough to enable the Virgil Borough to purchase a minimum eighty percent requirement of road salt by December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, in lieu of the current contract which states the salt must be purchased by June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Salt cost will remain the same at sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents per ton. The Borough is still obligated to purchase two hundred and sixty-two point three tons.
So move.
Bruce?
Second.
And Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Newbury Plan of Lots, Fourteenth Revision Subdivision and Consolidation Plan. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the Newbury Plan of Lots, Fourteenth Revision, Subdivision and Consolidation Plan. The plan has been submitted by Newbury Development Association and prepared by the Southern Environmental Consultants Incorporated, dated February twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. Purpose of this subdivision consolidation plan is for the establishment of a roadway easement that varies from forty feet to fifty feet with parallel to Churchill Street located within the Virgil Borough boundaries. This roadway will provide access to the northern portion of the property referred to as Partial G. And the area of, the area of easement within, located within the Borough is zero point one two two acres. No new lots are proposed within this new plan. The subdivision has been reviewed and approved by engineer sites. The planning commission recommends, recommended the approval to be contingent on the Virgil Borough and Safet Township entering into agreement regarding shared services and/or taxation of the parcel located within the Virgil Borough.
So move. I'll second to put out a question. I have a question on the guys.
Did we enter into agreement or have you talked to anybody in the diversity opinion?
Yeah, let me answer that. That's not actually a term name or necessarily a complex purpose. This is actually simply a pre-subdivision plan, there's an improvement, the road is actually private. And taxation for operation on a commercial parcel like this occurs by operation of law. So there's no agreement necessary. This is not actually even a new development plan. They'll actually have to come back with a second land development plan for the actual construction.
Because usually when they construct it, then it's turned over to the community, the community...
Not this, this would be a private commercial developmental road, correct?
Correct.
Now we're gonna be a public street.
Okay, so they'll take care of that?
That's right, and there's never, there's not any public services that need to be dithered. And as I've mentioned, the preparation of land value is a very significant thing.
It's rather interesting. Planning Commission, last time Newbury was here, they gave the same recommendation. And council, the solicitor came with the same confirmation, that no real thing really necessary. I would like to make sure of something. We do believe that mutual aid, chief, covers any requests for police services at anything that would be built in South, in South, in Bridgeville, but in... If we get a call that there's a robbery in process at the building that they build on this property.
We're talking about the property now?
The property in Newbury that is across Churchill's Creek from Virgil that would require Virgil to leave Virgil, go through Safet, go into Newbury, and get to that little spit of land. I am correct that our mutual aid will allow Safet to assist us in responding, right?
Yeah, I guess we're on a mutual...
That's fair. But while we've got Eric, would you mind if you gave us some insight into how everything else is going in Newbury? Since he's taken an hour and sat here through this? Because if he's got a moment, I'd love to hear it.
I don't mind answering any questions if there are any. I did bring up plans.
Let's get through this real quick.
Okay, get through this, yeah.
There's a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, go ahead, you've got three minutes.
So can you tell us, first of all, on the traffic work that you're doing in Safet Township? The vision, working on moving forward with the highway improvements that are on your side of the equation? How's Newbury coming along with those?
We're making good progress. We awarded a contract, actually last fall, to a company called A Felino Construction. They're highly regarded by PennDOT, they do a lot of work with PennDOT. The only thing that's holding us up at this point is, I would call it administrative, minor administrative items with PennDOT. Specifically, turns out there's a water main right in front of what was the BP gas station and the MedExpress property, which we're having a difficult time getting P American Water Company and PennDOT to agree as to how easements apply to that, whether that's a private utility, a public utility. PennDOT will not permit us to do any of our work until that's resolved since I'm not a direct party to that dilemma.
So that's the issue you're waiting for?
That, that's, there's that item, and then there's a second traffic signal maintenance item, which really is a discussion between Southfield Township and PennDOT.
Yeah.
Where, that's one where PennDOT has basically taken a position where they're asking Southfield to do some maintenance on a signal concurrently with some improvements that we're building into the same signal system and PennDOT's saying, "Oh, get it all done at once." But it's a maintenance item, it's a pre-existing problem that's not related to our work directly. So PennDOT has also requested that that be resolved and that that design dilemma be resolved before we proceed with work. So we're actively working on both of those items because we would like to proceed imminently. But neither one is directly within our control, which is often the case when you're dealing with projects that relate to PennDOT's words.
Let me bring up one more that's not directly within our control because we might be able to help if we've spoken about it. The sidewalk in front of Midas. I'm hopeful, I'm not gonna ask you if you can commit, that would be great. But a lot of our Virgil residents walk across the bridge, Churchill Street, to go to Aldi's and to go to that shopping center, maybe even go to Franklin Bank. And if you can see that there's a traffic area there. And there is no sidewalk in front of Midas. And there's a plan for doing that when the bridge gets built. But in the intervening year or two, because it's projected to be what, twenty nineteen for the bridge? Am I right?
That's what I was told. No, I was told not earlier than that. That's different than a commitment that it would occur by that point in time.
If you or the contractor Felino could see fit to put some asphalt in place of the mud, it would be appreciated.
I'll see what I can do.
Need to happen. Thanks a lot for coming.
Oh, yeah, so much. Thank you for taking quick action, thank you.
No problem. And Billis, motion of the Borough Council regarding the June two thousand seventeen...
Joe?
Second.
And Burke? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payroll, motion of Borough Council approving payrolls of June sixteen, twenty-three thirty, and July seventh, two thousand seventeen. And Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Month report, motion to accept and pay, motion to do the May two thousand seventeen real estate tax collector report. All those. Jambucci? And Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the April 2, 2017 financial report. All those. Jambucci? And Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the May 2, 2017 police report. So move. I'll call them. Yes. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I don't often do this or read the police report, and I think it's important for the public to understand, it's a busy community, and these guys are really busy. They have 270 calls for service in a night a day. And they wrote 95 traffic citations, 58 for speeding, 7 for stop signs. So they're addressing the issues that you were coming with, and I feel confident that they're giving the job down here, so. We'll take your, yeah, we'll take your comments and suggestions, and the chief will work here with us up here, and we'll address them. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill. Motion to accept the May 2, 2017 zoning report. So move.
Second.
Bill and Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports. Administration.
Finance. Now that we're six months through the year, we're going to have a financial, finance committee meeting sometime in the near future to just see how things are going and what things need to be addressed the second half of the year. Happy to report that the finance and the budgets are looking very good so far, especially with the mild winter, and excited to see that the 2016 delinquent tax list decreased over 35% this last month, so that's nice to see. There's still a nice size amount we'd like to see removed, but it's nice to see that number do not significantly in the last month. That's all I have to report.
Thanks, Joe. Parks and Rec.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Yes, everybody liked the sidewalk at the railroad.
Yes.
Or the ridge.
Very nice.
Very good. Our, that was all part of Public Works, with Lori and Joe being helpful, and a lot of it was done. Public Works, the Mollyshole, the sidewalks are named down there, and some of the cost was picked up by Washington, the Erie Railroad, and we picked up some of it, become way under what the estimates were. Our Public Works guys have been hard to work now. They're starting to pay this week. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Public Safety.
Just one comment, Mike, again, I'd like to commend the chief and his department for using social media for real-time information to the public. You know, we had a busy day Friday, just on Chertier Street, and then getting that information out is very helpful for people who avoid those areas, so commend to them.
Mr. Mayor.
Echoing Mary's comments, one of the distinct pleasures of this position is the more of a parade, and it was a very, very nice one. Not only at Melrose, but also at St. Barbara's, Bethany, and St. Agatha's, the Holy Child Cemetery. Would, would like to take a moment, Joe Sykes. The Water Company did work on Hickman Street in New York, and in the past, we have coordinated with them to repaint the entire street rather than just the half of the street. From our previous conversations, you've, you've thought, you look at at least Hickman Street, can you give me an understanding as to why, and I think I already answered it, but I'd like an answer for the public record, as to why on Hickman Street we did not pay the other half?
Well, the condition of Hickman Street was such that we would never even pay the other half of Hickman Street. It was less than 10 years old, so we didn't feel that we needed to, but it's always served.
And what do you think the dividing line is, less than 10 years?
Probably less than 10 years, yeah.
Okay. So that's the reason, anyone was wondering why it looks like half of it's done and half of it was not done, is because half of it is still good. I hope to see everyone at Flag Day this Wednesday. It's a very nice moment to take and pause. It's up at the War Memorial, and we're going to do a very nice event, hopefully the rain will cooperate. We're not counting on seven o'clock.
Thanks, Larry. We'll come back to the chief. Tom?
Aye.
Engineer Sykes?
Thank you, President. Some updates here. We went over the payments for the CCTV work. Advanced plumbing should be done over the next two weeks. Soilite construction mobilized here on May 29, this is repairs on Hickman Street and Missouri Street, and pulled out for a couple of days, it should be back in a week to keep progressing with that. The backflip preventers on Baldwin Street, we're currently working on the design and specifications for this backflip preventers. The manager gave us a list of areas and property owners, and once we get the design and specifications completed, we'll put it out for a bit. The pavement maintenance program, Casper Colcima completed the trenching paving where the water lines were installed last week on June 7, and we made a communication with Dunblon, and we'll be scheduling a pre-construction meeting in the next week to get the project started. That's for Shady, Cook, Sylvia, Main, and Spruce Street.
Joe?
Yes?
Have, do we have anything from the Water Company, the Gas Company, on Shady saying that they don't want to fix the water lines under Shady?
No.
Have we?
We reached out to them, and they said that not.
I don't believe it's unreasonable to ask for a positive confirmation that they don't want to redo the water line under Shady, considering that they redid the water lines in so many places. I know, it, it is, I really empathize because, and you know how frustrated I am. Let's please reach out one last time and make sure.
If it helps.
2015 pavement maintenance with, on Bauer Hill Road. I have a meeting with T.A. Robinson this week to walk it, mark out the locations again that have been repaired. I met with Peoples Gas, they are agreeing to pay for the service, for one lane where they put the gas line, so there'll be some cost savings to us with that. Nothing back from the DCN on the walk around Park Phase Two. Washington and James Development, the manager and I are going to meet with the architect on the 14th to review their latest design. Hopefully we'll see something, and it's, will be spot different. The Chertier Street, Washington Avenue, Chertier's Creek Bridge intersection, since the district executive, Dan Sessna, has left PennDOT, working on scheduling a task force meeting with all of our parties. Mr. Sessna is very supportive of the project and was assisted in assisting in looking for additional funds to close the gap typically project. The project is currently in the design phase, which qualifies it as a project, but all funding needs to be secured before any work can begin. So we're, since there's been a division of his duties between three people there in the district office, Mike Haven and I talked about this, and I thought it was very prudent to get a task force meeting together to keep this moving so we don't, nobody loses sight. So that's all I have.
Thanks.
Real quick, just for the benefit of the President, Greenwood. What's his story with the charity?
We're working on getting those, do we need additional visits or do we? I want to, let me talk about the contract, let me see what his price was again, and see if it's going to work.
Yeah, we can get that for sure.
We got it?
Yes.
Fire chief, Trilia.
Okay, Mr. President, you guys have my report for last month, what we, like, did recall. Just a couple of things. We did have, one of the calls we had last month was a major gas leak in one of the buildings up on Washington Avenue, which was found to be in one of the businesses in the basement. So that was one incident that was on the news. And the other thing is with Community Day, I'm sorry, Day on the Avenue. Both of them are the same in my book, but I talked with the county, they're bringing the, for the laws that does to get called off, they're bringing in the big command post they have that opens up to show that we do have a major incident, comes out to assist. As you can see with the LA County has, you know, in our back to call, we knew it's all just being used somewhere else. So we could choose the law in the county. So it's something neat to see where it's all in there, from checking out the weather and how they can handle a major incident out of this unit. So that will be here for a few hours on Saturday.
Just go outside?
Yes. That's it. Hope to see you every Saturday.
Sounds good, thanks.
The Community Day.
Day on the Avenue.
Yeah.
Just add something that's not as pleasant.
Push, chief, do you have anything to think?
I'll be real quick.
Obviously, the Bridgeville Avenue is Saturday, we'll have our booth this year. We have over 100 bicycle helmets that were donated to us through Cole's Hard Head Program for UPMC, so we have over 100 bicycle helmets for the kids that need them. That's any kid under the age of 12 needs one bicycle helmet, along with other slap ringers and things like that. Also, we passed out flyers letting residents know that the street will close down at 6:00 AM and reopen by 9:00 PM on Saturday. And there is a separate event taking place at Chertier's Park on Sunday, the 18th. It's called Bass for Bashum, and it's a, it's a fishing tournament that's being sponsored by a local sports club in honor of Scott Basham, who was a Kansas Park officer who was guilty of a liability duty last year. That will take place at Chertier's Park on Sunday. And I will, after, after I put those out on our Facebook page about Bridgeville Avenue, I'll put the flyer out about the Bass for Bashum event.
Thanks, chief. Dan, like, from South Ridge Parking Authority. Mike, do you have anything?
Another word on your favorite subjects. Can I go down, can you do a little history lesson about ours?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. We've had several gentlemen, we've given our lights up to four of us. First one up, Curtis Copeland, Henry Barnaby, Luke Comey. We've had a lot of great people to give us to this point. And one, one thing they've been, I have one act, and be responsible, pay your bills. Parking Authority has done this over the years, we've done the rebuilding of park lots, we try to make them reduce it to what Lori and probably Mark are doing with lights and shrubbery and whatever, spend a little more money on some of our lots. We're working with Joe right now to look at Lot Two, which is, is going to be a substantial investment. We know that we have two more lots not too far behind. So as responsible people, we've looked at your request for parking, and none, none of the numbers add up. We just, we're going to come up short, and then we're going, to this point in time, we're never going to ask for penny worth before we pay all our bills off. And Joe can tell you, we've spent some serious money on Lot Two, when we built Lot Two was that half a million dollars. So now we're on a basis of a hundred and seventy something.
A lot.
About seventy thousand. So I hate to say it, and that's going to shoot me, but I just don't know how we can do it.
No, Mike, I, I understand. I mean, that's not like, you know...
Yeah, and the means...
You know, for the, for you to be here tonight, we're not looking for, we're just asking, you know, what's going on in the parking floor, even like a regular, like, update. Stuff like that, we can have a, we can talk, you know, wait for me, I'd be like...
Our goal, our goal is in the spring of 18 to Lot Two, working at Lot Three, and probably five, two years after that.
Yeah, great.
That's, that's our goal, our goal is to make sure you don't hear anything of us.
Like a referee.
That's it. Separate the pens.
Yeah. Exactly.
We just, we're very proud of what we do. Got a lot of great people.
Sure.
They had a lot of great people. I wish we had Bert back. That we could talk about.
Thank you.
But we have a lot of, a lot, a lot of good help.
Thanks very much, Mike, I appreciate it.
I'm not going to shoot you.
Okay.
I very much appreciate it.
I'm going to move over here.
And I know that you are having some difficulty trying to make the numbers add up. As you said, you try and make it so that we don't, council and the borough doesn't get complaints. Obviously, you know that there are complaints, and they're significant, and they're meaningful. There are problems, and you are aware of them, and you are trying your best as parking authority and as individuals to address them. I know that. I point out to you that if you back away from the problem about 10 feet, I think you'll find that the numbers not only add up, but they add up much better than the numbers you're working with now. I know you don't, but you don't have anything on paper, right?
No, I'm lost.
Yeah. And I've given you, I've given you some, some items to take a look at. I would urge you, you know, a former councilwoman sent me down to Brownsville, Pennsylvania to take a look at it. And I remember driving through Brownsville, Pennsylvania, and I got the message very clearly. Buildings that were hollowed out, but the parking lots still stood. But by the, by the time I got down there, they weren't collecting anything because there weren't any businesses left. Yeah, because it had all gone away. By the way, that wasn't entirely due to their parking problem, but it wasn't helped by it either. So please, keep it, keep an eye open line to creative, innovative solutions. Changing the dynamic of what, of what you're doing by not, not asking, train, you know, short-term individuals, our customers, to hassle with the difficulties of the EYOS could truly improve the business environment in our community. That's a very important, you know, objective, and you can do it without hurting the revenue stream that the parking authority relies on. You can also improve the situation for the residents who are on Chest Street and not, not all, you know, close to, but not in the business in, again, the mixed-use district. Those people are burdened by having long-term parkers that simply walk an extra 40 or 50 feet. And again, that's what council comes in for. We have, council needs to work with the parking authority to set up a system that prevents people from utilizing all of the neighborhood parking spaces to park all day while they go to work. But none of that can work with the system that we've relied on for almost 60 years. Because the parking authority moves reform, it's pretty much done the same thing. The world has changed around us. Let's adjust a little bit. Thank you.
I'll tell you one thing, some of the suggestions I've got over the last two months came to fruition. You've got to change your Bridleboro street, so it's keep there to hang on the street because they'd have the parking authority hanging there.
I don't think so. I know there's a fear that you, that is palpable, that the authority fears that if it makes some changes, you know, obviously, there are three rules of parking that are immutable. One, everybody's got to park someplace. Drive, you got to park your car someplace. Two, there's no such thing, the parking has to be paid for. You can't have parking lots without having somebody... You can't have parking lots without having somebody paying to maintain them, shovel them, fix them. Have to do it. And if you, if you don't have ample parking, it has, no, I'm sorry, the third one is everyone wants to park in front of the door they want to walk into. That's the third one. Everyone wants to park in front of the door they walk into. If you follow those three immutable rules, you can create a structure that allocates the burden of paying for parking, rationing that parking amongst the competing, you know, users, and truly improves the business environment by not bothering, how many, how many transactions are there?
Yeah, 87.
How many?
Eighty, 8,700 last month.
8,700 transactions last month. Remember how many, the average is about one or two hours?
1.4, 14 minutes, so it's less than 45 minutes.
Right, less than 45 minutes. You could get rid of, what, at least three quarters of the transactions if you didn't try and collect for the first hour or two. Three quarters of the people not having to worry about anything.
This is not the place to do this.
I know.
We need a lot of help, we need officers, we need.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk on this.
Yes, we're discussing that, but this is a Parking Authority meeting.
It's a, it's a moment for me to say, "I'm not gonna shoot you."
Alright. For Amanda.
I provided my report for anyone who has questions. And I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a virtual day on the Avenue, 11 to 7 on Saturday, so I'd be very keen to come on and contribute a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Old business, I got something real quick for the business. Last month, we had the Baldwin Street comprehensive plan from Carolyn. And you know, kind of want to discuss it, whether I'm going forward or, or not.
The first phase of this.
Four thousand five hundred and twenty cents.
We currently have that in the budget?
Uh, we have $2,500 in the budget, in that line item.
In that line?
In that line item.
And we've saved on salt?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see us get going somehow. I'm probably bad. If it needs to be informed, motion, I think we can find the money, I'd like to get that in. Will you ever see it fully getting moved forward? It's good, it's good. Now's the time to start. And that's the time to start because you got some, you got a lot of big lots down there because of the rapid rate of buildings for tore down and stuff like that. If you're gonna start, now would be the time to start. Before you do any more planning or anything down there. FEMA's already told us they're not gonna interact or respond to any flooding concern anymore, so. Outside of going into the first floor, so as we move forward here, it's a process, it's a plan to know what we're gonna do to help the people down. We might not, I might not see it in my lifetime, but at least it'll be a start. We can buy new plumbing. Thanks. Mike, can you do that in the form of motion?
Yes.
So move.
Alright, give me a second.
I'll see you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. New business.
I have a couple of things. The Southwest Community Chamber of Commerce asked me to announce that they're having their annual fundraiser. This year, they're doing a three-year prepaid lease for that beautiful looking 2017 Chevy Silverado out there, or $18,000 in cash. If anyone would like a ticket, I have plenty of them, so please feel free to contact me and I'll be happy to get you one.
When's the draw?
I'm sorry?
When's the draw?
Uh, July 18th, I think. They always have a nice little picnic and everything outside of their office. The Bridgeville Athletic Association asked me to report that they will be having the annual movie at dusk on the day of the Avenue. It'll be at dusk at night, not on the Avenue, but at Chartier's Park. So if you'd like to come down, we'll be putting the movie up in Wright Field on the small field on a nice screen that the VAA purchased. And it'll be a kid-friendly movie, of course. And that'll be with dusk is around what, 9, 9 o'clock or so.
And here it is. Motion carries. So move. Second. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, yeah. For a very long time, they just got more license. I still. Going on the paper.